I thought Amanda, like, you know, coming in.
The room was packed, too. I remember, you guys, I thought you guys had great audience participation, but that was the night the football team took...
4:30.
Something in the whole place was full of football players. It was awesome.
Are we on the record now, Clark?
Yes.
Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. This is...
The San Clemente City Council meeting, Tuesday, February 18th, 4:30 p.m. We're scheduled to go into closed session to discuss public employee performance. And do I have a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, we're going to closed session. Be back at 5:30.
Thank you.
Hello, one and all. We're beginning the meeting now. It's Tuesday, February the 18th, 5:30 PM. This is the meeting of the San Clemente City Council. It's called Order. And let's begin with the invocation. Do we have...
Lead Pastor Mark Ambrose.
Oh, there he is. Pastor.
Thank you. Thanks for having me. Appreciate it. Lord, we... Well, first of all, I just want to thank you for a new day that all of us have enjoyed and that we're all healthy enough to be here tonight. Grateful for that. And I just pray for each council member, Lord, that you would protect them, keep them. They are here as our voted in designated leaders of this town we call San Clemente. And I just pray for their decision-making even tonight. They bring a wealth of experience, but I pray you would also give them just supernatural wisdom and insight in the decisions that would best impact the community. So we commit this meeting to you and all that is decided in it, and ask you to guide it and direct it. In Jesus's name. Amen.
Mr. Cabral, would you lead us in the pledge?
I will. Put your hand over your heart. Take your hats off. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all.
Thank you. Okay, roll call. Let the record show all members are present. We have a special presentation this evening from Pier Pride. Amber Gregg, there she is. Come right ahead, Ms. Gregg.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for having me here tonight. My name is Amber Gregg, and I have the honor of being the Vice President of Pier Pride. And for the folks at home who might not know who Pier Pride is, we're a nonprofit organization that work on helping to beautify the pier and make it its best self. We've been able to do a lot of different events or projects over the last couple of years. And if I could have staff go to the next slide. Just here's a short list of every single year Pier Pride has been able to accomplish a CIP project with the city, and that's no small feat for a small group of nonprofit volunteers. This year, the latest one was the Wheeler North Reef Beach Cleaning of the sign that's on there. It's a black, as well as the bicycle racks. And I'll get to that in just a second. If we could go to the next slide, please. So right now, Pier Pride actually has our sights on the 100th anniversary of the pier, which has the same anniversary date of our city, which is 1928, so in 2028. And in honor of the 100th anniversary, we're looking to restore the pier entrance to be reminiscent of when it was when Ollie Hansen originally had developed it. So our goal is to open the historic views up to the pier. Right now, they're blocked, as you can see in that bottom picture, and also improve the pedestrian pinch points that are happening down there that are causing a little bit of conflict between pedestrians and cars in the trolley because, of course, it's a place where everybody wants to be. But the reason why we're here tonight, if you go to the next slide, happens to be the project that is just being completed, and that's the bike rap project. That's also at the base of the pier where the RSVP building was. Those improvements included new pavers, new landscaping, new wayfinding, so new fun bike racks out there. So it's just not the older bike racks that were kind of flopping around. So we have some ocean-themed bike racks as well as a new RSVP building. And we're looking forward to the ribbon cutting happening this Saturday along with the fishing derby. So we'll be down there for a grand opening of that. So we really want to thank the city council for all their support on this project. We do have a check of $20,000 to present for you tonight.
Do you have a gold medal up to the great big?
We were just talking about that, that we need a big check. We don't have one yet. So we'll have to add that.
So why don't you join me and we'll receive that check from Amber.
Perfect.
Thank you.
And I just want to say thank you so much to staff for all the support on this, too. Samantha's been amazing.
You could actually have someone hold the check. He could carry that way up there.
It'll look like it's better.
Yeah.
Well, even though we don't have a gigantic flag, it's a gigantic heart from the group in this community that does so much for our town, for the pier, the generosity of your people. We appreciate it very much, and we thank you for this check. God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Andy's going to Charlie Bronson's.
Wow. Your council members smile a lot bigger with $20,000.
Amber, thank you so much.
No, thank you so much. Oh, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. God bless.
Thanks so much.
I'm going to look that in my pocket.
I'm going to give this to the city manager so that he can properly call it. Or the clerk, though. Here we go. There you go.
Thank you very much.
Got it. Thank you.
I'll go look at you.
Did that just go in his, in his pocket right there?
Hey, this ain't Dell.
Thank you very much, Pier Pride. We really appreciate it. We have, we don't have any more special presentations, but Mr. Enmeyer, did you have a request to bring an item forward?
Well, we're just going to council member report, so I can just do it with this. For, we have a special guest here tonight from the Casa, the Coastal Animal Shelter, and would love to have them come up, Jennifer, and present.
Sure, sure. Move the microphone so it come.
So we can speak.
She does shed. I need to hide out there.
That's a warning to any potential adopters. She's a shedder. So hopefully, your furniture's white in her case. So this is Delphi. So I'm Jennifer from the San Clemente Dana Point Animal Shelter, and this is Officer Moran, and we have brought one of our adoptable pets today. So this is Delphi. She is about a three-year-old Chihuahua, a little girl, and she came to us one month ago. And she was rescued by our officers along with four other dogs from a home in the harbor, a boat in the harbor. The owner was unable to care for her pets anymore. So she turned them over to us, and they're all available for adoption. Now, she being the most micro one, the other ones were a lot bigger. So we brought Delphi. She's a little more pocket size. So Delphi would do best in a calm household. She, as you can see, she's kind of a snuggler. So and although she came in with a bunch of other dogs, we have found that she was kept separate from that group in her home, separated. And we have found it's because she prefers to be your one and only. So she would do best in a dog-free home. She will be ready for adoption soon. You can kind of see she does have a prior injury to one of her eyes that she's receiving vet care for and has been. So over the last month, and that is kind of ongoing, and that'll be all taken care of before she actually goes home with somebody. So we're accepting applications for Delphi. You can check all of our animals out through the city of San Clemente website. All of them are posted there, the ones that we have for adoption. So she, this one in particular, she's a big cuddler. She would be a great lapdog and would be a wonderful companion for anybody. So we just wanted to show her off. So we thank you all here and in the council for having us today.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd just make one note, one thing that I'm really proud about with our city and through partnership with Dana Point as well is that our animal shelter is a no-kill animal shelter. And we often will take animals from other shelters in order to save them and keep them safe. And that's through the help of our Pet Project Foundation as well. So thank you very much for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark, for your service on that board. Next item is council member reports. Mr. Wu, would you like to start?
Sure. Over the last two week, weeks, I attended a briefing with our sheriff's barners, attended a homeless collaborative meeting to get to know the people there, and also had a meeting with our new police chief, Captain Chevalier. Welcome aboard. That's all.
Mr. Lefler. Sure, sure, sure. Victor, would you have anything?
You know, I have a whole list, but I listen in my car. So I'll report next time.
Have to think about it.
I'll report next time.
Mark, would you like to?
Mr. Mayor, if I can, Councilmember Cabral, if there are any statutory disclosures you need to make, they have to be made tonight. So that would be meetings that you attended since the last meeting where you received any kind of reimbursement or per diem.
Does that new? I don't...
OCFA. No, that's the, it's in the government code. That's why this, this item exists on the agenda.
Let me, I might left it in the back there. Let me go check.
Yeah, go ahead. Mark, did you have anything?
Just say that I had a meeting with the board for the Casa, or the Coastal Animal Shelter. Mr. Lefler, thanks for joining me on that one. That was, that was great. And everything's running smoothly. It was all about our, our rescues and, and numbers and everything's going great. So yeah, not really much to report there.
Okay. Mr. Lefler?
Yeah. And thank you for allowing me to go to that. I've been the alterer on that for a while, and I really didn't know how it worked. And it was really educational to know how the animal shelter is working and what great, great work they do. Also met with Chief Chevalier. It was enlightening. I think we've got a real good chief here. I mean, we've had real good chiefs here, but I think that's going to continue. And I just want to bring up something. I was going to actually talk about it at the retreat, but we didn't have the time to do it. So I just want to mention something. When I came on council, I, I vowed that we were going to be a close-knit group and not contentious. And I, I think the last meeting we had a couple of weeks ago, I feel a little embarrassed about how, how that went. I, I don't expect anybody else to. But for, for myself, I know we had a passionate topic come up, and there's a lot of passionate residents here as well they should be. And I think sometimes our passion maybe got a little bit more than it, it should. You know, going forward, I'm going to try to make sure that I'm not interacting with the public and that we're, that we're letting the public speak and bring up all their cogent comments. And then we can respond with cogent comments, and we'll vote on an issue, and then, then we'll, we'll move on, just like we've always been doing. So I just hope that one was a little bit of a, of a blip. The other thing I want to let, because there's a misconception, and I learned this after that meeting, that the public believes that if, if somebody seconds a motion and we get a third, that somehow we have pre-decided that this is, this is what we support. And that's, I think, why we had so many come out. They, they thought it was, whatever it was, was a done deal, and there was going to be no discussion. And the fact is, I, I think myself and the person, I think, I seconded it, and I said, I don't know anything about this proposition. I'd like to know more about it. And I think Victor said, well, I'll third it. I'd like to get a, a staff report. So we get some education, because it could be a city matter. We don't know. And I, I just, I, when somebody brings up something on city council and we feel that we possibly should address it, I think getting a second or a third is completely appropriate, but does not mean that we've decided anything. That's why we bring it here, so we can learn about it, so the residents can speak, and then we make our decision. That's kind of the process. And like I said, I didn't know so many people were under a different impression, but I hope this lets you know that no matter what we're talking about on the agenda, you will have your time to speak. And most of the time, it has, it has an effect on how we vote. So again, thank you so much for coming and participating. That's what we want you to keep on doing, and we're just going to do it in a civil manner.
That's a good discussion, good description of how that works. And again, until the council votes on any particular matter, then it's, it's under consideration. So thank you for that discussion.
And I, I actually did think, I just wanted to, to, to second that, that, that point. And I think I talked a little bit about it last meeting, so I, I gave the third for that because I wanted the, the staff to prepare a report and give us all the background. Because otherwise, we don't know all the issues that are involved in it. And we have, I hadn't made a decision. Obviously, we, we made the contrary decision on that once we, we learned what, what was happening. And so again, things that are on the agenda, people forget, we can't talk to each other about this stuff. So we don't go and say, hey, what are you going to do with it? We don't, I try not to have any discussions with anybody. We can talk to one other member, but I try not even to do that so that, you know, when we come here, we're getting the information just as you're getting it and making the decision.
Can we transition to council member reports?
That's part of my report. The, the OCFA, I had a meeting, we, we had a meeting, we have another meeting, I think, on the 10th. Well, actually, we have an emergency meeting coming up next week where we'll, we'll, we'll discuss. I, I don't know what the issue is, but we have an emergency OCFA meeting. I've had a couple of meetings over this past week with the Songs Committee Engagement Panel, trying to finalize agenda for this year. And given all the changes that are happening in Washington, trying to, I'm trying to get them to reassess where they're going as an organization, given that Washington's going to make a lot of changes to the Department of Energy. And so the, the right course is not the same course. It's a different course of action. And I'm trying to convince the, the commission that that's a new course that, that has to be developed. I have a meeting this week with the U.S. Marines Liaison. I think it's tomorrow morning, early. meeting this week with the U.S. Marines Liaison, I think it's tomorrow morning, early, to talk about how we move forward. There's also a Marine Corps, the 2-1 Dinner coming up next week. There's a golf course committee meeting, which wasn't on my calendar, unfortunately, so I'm going to catch up with the leadership there this week to figure out how we move forward with our golf course over the, the next year. We have an investment advisory, I think it was last, a couple of weeks ago, where we discussed the 115 Trust that we're going to put on the agenda. I think it's the next meeting or the one after where we're going to move forward with the 115 Trust. And when I say move forward, it will be on the agenda. I don't know what anybody else thinks about it. I just know that I, that we're putting it on the, the agenda. We had a Cal Cities meeting this past week where we, we discussed and approved our agenda moving forward for this year. And I think I have a meeting this, this week with the new sheriff to talk about what, what, what our relationship as a city council, or with me at least, is going to be. So those are the things I'm working on this week and next. Did I miss something? Okay.
Okay. And this last, during, since our last meeting, I attended an Orange County Transit Authority meeting along with the Save Our Beaches, and talked about the prioritizing of the, of the rail protection issues, including the hopefully strong possibility of sand. Attended a meeting earlier today with our new sheriff's captain, very brief, but, but effective meeting, and nice meeting. Also, we, I attended a meeting that, that the city manager set up with former congressman Brian Bilbran in San Diego, who's very active in the Songs issue, and had a lot of insights to share on his.
Got about that meeting.
On his, on his experience in San Diego, being a, a mayor, a council member and a congressman, supervisor and a congressman. And that was very information, very good information to hear his insights on how to deal with the federal and state bureaucracies. So that's all I have to report. Gentlemen, unless there's anything else.
I forgot something. I forgot, I attended the OCTA meeting with our city manager and city attorney, and had a chance to have a discussion with both our supervisor and our representative, Jamie Federico, about our needs and moving forward, what, what I'd like to see happen in this city with OCTA. So those were very productive meetings. Mr. Mayor, since, make a request, maybe, that since his name's been mentioned a few times, maybe Chief Chevalier would like to step up here and say hello, so we could kind of put a face with our, our new chief.
Thank you. I was going to do that at the end of the meeting, but this is a great time to do that, so.
He might leave early.
Captain, come right ahead. Good to see you. Welcome to San Clemente.
Good evening, Mayor Knoblock, members of the city council, and city staff. I'm humbled and grateful for this opportunity to serve with you guys and look forward to our relationship building.
Thank you. Thank you. Welcome. Welcome. All right. The next item on the agenda is oral communications. Do we have any public speakers requests, Madam Clerk?
We do. I'll name the first few speakers. Amanda Quintanilla, followed by Michelle Morgan, followed by Mickey Rathman.
And how many more do you have beyond that? I'm just curious.
Just five. Five total.
Okay, thank you.
I have a couple of slides. Just make it easier on me and move this faster. I also attended OCTA meeting, and it was really great. OCT is fantastic.
Our screen.
Are you screen?
My screen's not working.
There we go. I'm glad that other cities are helping fight battery farms. I know our residents fought against a battery farm with the prospect of having one on TCA property in Toledo. This is a letter from Mayor Genaway of Laguna Niguel. He says, "I urge you to stop the sale of Saddleback Church property and prevent the development of battery energy storage system by Compass Energy, Compass, in the city of San Juan Capistrano. Saddleback Church was gifted this land by Hobby Lobby to support the church's mission not to serve as a project, a site for a hazardous BES facility." I understand that the city of San Juan Capistrano rejected the project, and I think the problem is the, they went around it to do, make an application with the California Energy Commission. So I hope that our city is looking, in a way, to protect our town from a vander energy storage system, because I know there were some talks about having a BES system at Balakalina. Next, two slides over, please. This, yesterday, there was, I saw the California Beach Town, a little news clip of Mayor Knoblock mentioning about the Panga boats, and, next slide, please. And I think this is, to bring this to more realistic kind of, we've seen this, we've, throughout the years, throughout the decades, the sign on the I-5, right before the border patrol section, station there. And I know, growing up here, it was a concern, especially at North Beach. Well, my incident that happened, an illegal alien went to our backyard, and so I acted very calmly and collective, and I went into my home, told a family member what, there was someone in our backyard, actually, my playhouse. And fortunately, we happened to look outside through the windows, and the police were already going up our street. We opened the door, told them it wasn't in my backyard, in my playhouse, and thank God that nothing happened to me. But here's a situation where things were, people were coming through the border, and we did see those signs. Now they're coming up Panga boats, and I just wanted to let you know that it, it is a reality. It does happen to us, and thank God, nothing happened to me. Also, to change the, the topic about the OCTA meeting, Mr. Hall thanked the OCTA for really working collaboratively with our town, and they have Sanirishment on their plans since December of 2023, and they're great partners. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Michelle Morgan, followed by Mickey Rathman, followed by Donovan Green.
I'm here to express my deep concerns regarding the ongoing issue of battery energy storage systems and the risks that, that pose with our community environment and public health. Last week, I attended a meeting hosted by city council members from San Juan Capistrano and Laguna Niguel regarding this issue, and I wanted to bring this matter to your attention in the hopes that San Clemente will join the growing efforts to oppose the building of lithium battery storage facilities in neighborhoods. AB 303 is a key bill designed to address and prevent the dangerous consequences associated with lithium, lithium battery storage. This bill, supported by Assembly Member Lori Davies and Congressman Mike Levin, seeks to halt the spread of these facilities and protect our local communities from the risks they pose. However, further research has revealed troubling connections to Chinese interests indirectly backing the movement, which only raises additional concerns about the motivations behind this push. These battery storage systems, especially those proposed near residential neighborhoods, are a significant threat to public health, safety, and local control. Since 2017, there have been four major fires related to BES, releasing harmful chemicals and toxins into the environment. It is clear that these facilities endanger our air, land, and water, as well as well-being of our residents. Currently, the Board of Supervisors has enacted a 90-day moratorium. Laguna Niguel and San Juan Capistrano have already voted unanimously to oppose these facilities, and I believe it is vital that San Clemente join their efforts. To date, 11 counties have formed California Safe Energy Storage to oppose the expansion of these lithium storage plants. And it would be a tremendous step forward to add your voices to this cause. There are no benefits to having these facilities placed in our neighborhoods, other than private financial gain. In fact, property values would likely suffer, and most recent reports from moss landing where a similar facility operates are alarming. Children in the area have developed rashes, breathing difficulties, and have tested high for heavy metals. The site is even being referred to as a Chernobyl, with a large surrounding area being deemed unsafe for agricultural use due to the contamination. Moreover, the proponents of BES are attempting to bypass local authority by working directly with the California Energy Commission, which undermines the rights of cities and their residents to protect themselves from these dangers. The proposed site is situated between two fire hazards, fire hazard zones. In the event of a fire, chemical spill, or accident, these dangerous substances could reach our fragile ocean ecosystem within hours, causing irreversible damage. Please stand with the citizens of San Clemente and California by supporting AB 303 and taking a strong stance against the encroachment. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
I brought some information for you as well, about AB 303, and.
Just get back to the floor.
Followed by Donovan Green, followed by Abby Paulson.
Go right ahead.
Hi, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Mickey Rathman. I'm a local resident and a small business owner with a shop on Avenida Del Mar, and I'm here just to chat to you tonight about local business. I know during campaign season, it's a really great talking point for council candidates to say that they really support small businesses and want to do great things for the small businesses in town. So I would love to see some of our council members in our local shops and in our businesses downtown to see what we're up to. I also was hoping tonight just to share some insights and maybe some ideas on how the council and the city can support local businesses in San Clemente, specifically on Avenida Del Mar. You may or may not have noticed, but there's lots of changes and a lot of things happening downtown, and there are a lot of vacancies and things that are under construction. So over the last, I don't know, I'm just going to say, six or so months, the warehouse business closed, the Three Dog Bakery closed and has a new business coming in there, the Picnic Collective, but that is still under construction. Salt Life is closing, Petite Boheme closed, the Antique Store closed, HH Cotton's closed. All those businesses are still empty. The Sotheby's Realty closed, didn't close, pardon me, moved, and the Cooley Coffee is going in there, which is under construction. One of our optometrists in the 200 blocks merged with Griffin Optometric and moved up the street, so now that business storefront is empty. J'Dor Cafe closed, and a new business is going into there. So there's a lot of stuff. Oh, and also the Zovs, there's that, you know, construction site has been like a hole and a disruption for probably, I don't know, two or three years. So all of those things added together kind of create a little bit of blight for our downtown when there are all of those constructions, papered windows, empty things. So I just encourage the city and the council to do what they can to help those businesses get open, so that our downtown can continue to be vibrant, so to help those folks. The outdoor dining decks, I know, are a very popular amenity, and they are nice, and they do help the restaurants, but it would be nice to see some things happening to also help some of our other businesses that aren't restaurants. So taking a look at those outdoor dining decks that are underutilized and that have dead plants and aren't looking so great. Maybe having our Green Line trolley start on Memorial Weekend, like the red and the blue line, instead of that starting much later into the summer. That Green Line services many of our hotels, motels, and our camping areas, which are really important. Sidewalk cleanings, not doing leaf blowing where the leaf blowing blows all the leaves up into our door fronts. Doing, I have a few other things, which I'll email you, but there's a lot of things that you can do to help us.
Please send that to us, Nikki. Those are important issues. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
You're very welcome. Yeah, absolutely.
Donovan Green, followed by Abby Paulson.
Dear Councilman Loeffler, after reading the article in the Orange County Register today, I feel compelled to speak up and set the record straight. Facts matter, and it's important to address any distortions of reality that serve to fuel a divisive agenda against the homeless. Yesterday, I attended a Bible study at North Beach led by Jeff, a member of a local church group, less than 20 people. They meet daily except for Sundays. I was warmly welcomed and participated in the Bible study, which included readings from Genesis, Proverbs, and First John. The group consisted of both housed and those experiencing homelessness. Coffee was offered, which was appreciated early in the morning at the beach. The area was clean, the bathrooms were in good condition, and there was no littering. It was a peaceful, beautiful way to start my day at the beach. Councilman Loeffler, in the article today, you are quoted as saying that North Beach is becoming like Venice Beach, with unpermitted vendors and singling out the Bible study led by Jeff. This is a misrepresentation of the North Beach community. You also compared it to Dohany State Beach, describing an organized mass feeding of the homeless and food insecure people, which allegedly leads to increased trash and dirtier bathrooms. This comparison is not accurate, and it stokes fear and division in our community. We have ordinances in place to deal with littering, and our beaches are regularly patrolled by park rangers and OCSD. Fear of the homeless should not be amplified. This only creates more division in our city. I encourage all of us to work together to remove barriers and create permanent supportive and affording housing in San Clemente, rather than allowing these divisive narratives to drive us apart. Our beloved North Beach community should remain a welcoming space for everyone, housed or unhoused, to come together in peace. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Abby Paulson.
Hi, my name is Abby Paulson, a district associate for Vice Chair Katrina Foley, who proudly represents San Clemente on the Orange County Board of Supervisors. I'm just here today to give a little update to everyone on things that the county has been working on, and that may benefit San Clemente. Last month, the Orange County Board of Supervisors elected Supervisor Foley as vice chair, while she will continue to serve our community in a leadership role for the next year. In 2024, Vice Chair Foley went everywhere, including 1,000 community engagements, and returning nearly $1.25 billion tax dollars from DC and Sacramento to reinvest in our community, create good-paying jobs, and modernize public infrastructure. One of Vice Chair Foley's top priorities has been and continues to be saving the beautiful beaches of San Clemente. Last year, she secured $305 million to place 500,000 cubic yards of sand onto eroding South Orange County beaches and stabilize our railroad. She also spearheaded joining Sand Egg in the Regional Beach Sand Replenishment Project, replenishing North Beach, San Clemente, and Capistrano Beach with sand from the Santa Anna River. We are already seeing so many positive results up and down the coast from this project. In 2025, she began the South Orange County Coastal Resiliency Coalition to develop a plan for protecting and maintaining our beaches, just like we do roads, sidewalks, and parks. We also know that large sandy beaches provide the best buffer to protect our rails, so Vice Chair Foley and the Orange County Transportation Authority continue to work to find the best plan to save our precious coast and protect important Orange County infrastructure. Public safety also remains another top priority of Vice Chair Foley's going into 2025. This is why she opposes the proposed location for a battery storage energy system project, or BES project, in San Juan Capistrano that borders the city of Laguna Niguel, adjacent to dry, fire-prone, open space areas. These facilities are, use lithium-ion battery technology to generate their own oxygen, so water rarely extinguishes the flames. At our January 2028 meeting, the OC Board of Supervisors approved Vice Foley's urgency ordinance, a temporary moratorium granting the county and OCFA 90 days to develop safety standards and regulations, so that the BES facilities are built responsibly in the right location away from neighborhoods and fire zone areas. On February 11, the Board of Supervisors unanimously supported the first reading of Vice Chair Foley's nitrous oxide ordinance. Nitrous oxide, also known as NOx, laughing gas, whipits, or galaxy gas, causes brain suffocation and serious neurological harm when inhaled. Its primary use is for food aerosols and in surgical operations of short duration. However, its wide availability specifically targets young adults and teens who don't know its negative neurological effects, impacting public health and safety of our community. The ordinance is a big step in the right direction, keeping our kids and vulnerable populations safe from dangerous substances. Vice Chair Foley looks forward to continued partnership with the city of San Clemente, businesses, and residents, to maintain our quality of life, create good paying jobs, and keep our neighborhoods safe in 2025.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's it for oral communication.
Okay. Item four, we have a motion waiving the reading in full of all resolutions and ordinances.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. I hear nuns. Measure passes unanimously. Any suggestions for changing the scheduling of our items this evening?
No.
Okay, hearing none. Item six, closed session report. City Attorney?
Thank you. The council met in closed session on item A. There was direction given, no reportable action. Thank you.
Staff communications, item seven. Okay, and we'll go to public hearings. None. With that, we go to unfinished business. None. New business, 10A. Introduction, first reading of an ordinance adding chapter 8.26 to the San Clemente Municipal Code. an ordinance adding Chapter 8.26 to the San Clemente Municipal Code regarding the distribution of food and drinks on public property. We've all seen the report, but do we have a staff report on this?
A quick staff report. I would like to put, no, there we go, right there. So at the last meeting, the city council asked staff to prepare some information about why or why we should not regulate food distribution on public property. I think it was well explained tonight that the city council, at this point, has not made up their mind, but at least it's an item for discussion. And just so everyone knows, there's already a lot of regulations on food. Of course, the city works with the county health department for gatherings of over 50 people. They require food handling permits, they require sinks, restrooms, some of those kinds of things. So there was a thought that perhaps if we are going to allow food, additional food to be distributed on public property, perhaps it should be consistent for all food distribution. The regulations are not a ban. There's, that wouldn't ban food being, but rather provisions to ensure the public safety and sanitary conditions for those that may be participating in that activity. So what was brought to staff quite some time ago was a situation similar to this, where there are times where there are, there's food that is given to the public, and the public chooses not to consume it. And what's left behind, of course, is, in this case, you can see the dog at the bottom, you can see a donut covered in chocolate at the top. And what was, what was brought to me is, you know, a lot of dogs, or they're allergic, or can get very sick, perhaps even death, when they eat chocolate. So it's important that these kinds of things are important, or a child could approach this, and who knows, and eat some of this kind of stuff. So one of the things that was brought up is that, at the very least, we should make sure that there are sanitary conditions, and if there is food distributed on public property, that it be cleaned up. I won't mention the flowers, but, you know, we'll move forward. So staff put together a, based on basically what happens when there's a gathering of more than 50 people, for the council to consider. The council may consider some or all of these, but we would want to make sure that there are a place where people can at least engage in sanitary conditions, whether that is a sink with warm water, at least that. Maybe there's a chance to have some disinfectant wipes or something like that, but you want to make sure that, that anybody that is either serving food or obtaining food, that we're doing that as sterile as possible. And typically, if someone is handing out food, they should probably be very careful about that, to gloves, some of those kinds of things. If it is warm food, you want to make sure that it has stayed warm. If it was cold food, we should make sure that it has stayed cool enough so that we don't end up with, again, unsafe food. There is also some idea that, you know, we want to take into consideration some of the health concerns that some people may have. Sometimes, you know, again, I'm a living witness of this. If someone puts a donut in front of me, I'm going to eat it, even though I shouldn't. And so we want to be careful and make sure that, in a more serious tone, if someone either has medications that would be impacted by rising either sugar levels or other, other food that's given out, we want to make sure that no one's becoming ill because of some of these situations. We want to make sure that we understand where the food is coming from, making sure that the food is safe and whatnot. Indicate the beginning and ending time, so people know when the distribution begins and ends, that the permits either have a single, either a single day duration or some kind of duration, so that we understand how long that, that the distribution will take place. Demonstrate the need for the distribution. One of the things that we want to make sure is that people understand there are a lot of places in our community where we have spent taxpayer money to make sure that there's availability of food. So we want to make sure that people understand that there are other places where people can get food. And then satisfy city insurance requirements. This is occurring on city property. Should someone get hurt or ill, there is a potential liability with the city. And then finally, just to get a permit like we would any other permit. So again, these are just ideas that are thrown up based on some of the larger food distributions that we have when the, when the county issues food handling permits. It just kind of mirrors that. You may want to consider some, all, none of these, but at least it gives you an opportunity to have some discussion. So again, if you have, don't have any questions of staff, we're waiting for a
draft. Are there any questions of staff before we hear from the public?
I have a really quick question, City Manager. You mentioned a 50-person limit. I don't see that in the proposed language. Can you?
I'm sorry. In order for anyone to have a gathering of more than 50 people, where they serve food, you would need to get a food handler's permit from the county. Oh, okay. Yeah, sorry.
Any other questions?
Yeah. Just as way of background, this was brought up, I think, a long time ago, just as a general applicability to everybody that serves or distributes food in the city, right?
Yeah, on public property. This is not pertaining to private property.
Yeah, so it's, when did this first come out? Months, months, year ago?
You know, yeah, we've been talking about, you know, food distribution for quite some time. It was put on the agenda officially at your last meeting, but there's been discussions throughout the
The topic comes up pretty regularly.
That's the time we discuss the beach issues, security, it comes up frequently.
Yeah, all right. Okay, that's it.
Mark, you have a question?
Yeah, just really quickly. What is the number limit that we're looking at for a permit on this?
I don't know. Again, that, and I, staff does the best with the information that we have, and it's very difficult, because you haven't had a chance to discuss this, and we kind of take a stab. This would be, you know, any, any distribution of food on public property. When you're distributing food to persons, groups, that would apply to those groups.
So if a group of five were to gather together, and then they distribute food to two people, you would need a permit for that?
Potentially.
Any other questions of staff? If not, let's hear from the public. Do we have speakers?
Yes, I'll call the first several speakers up. Jennifer Massey, followed by Catherine Moore, followed by Rhonda, followed by Patty Vititis.
And Madam Clerk, how many speakers do we have roughly?
Ten cards so far, yes.
Well, good evening, handsome young men. We want to know, we want you to know, even though we disagree with you, we still are grateful for your service. Okay. I'll be very quick on this. Please vote no on Measure 10A. This aims to ban sharing food and fellowship with the homeless at North Beach and other locations. The city will lose if taken to court and result in wasted taxpayer funds. I am not religious, but as a human being, I appeal to you, my city council members, to be comforting for those less fortunate than are we. I think we all know how blessed we are. I think we want to share some of that with the less fortunate.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Catherine Moore.
Hello, Zen. Hello, Rick. Hello, Steve. Hello, Mark. Hello, Victor, and hello, Elizabeth. I am here tonight to strongly oppose the proposed ordinance that would prohibit the sharing of food with strangers in public spaces. This ordinance is not only morally wrong, it is legally indefensible. Let's start with the law. The U.S. Constitution is the supreme law of the land, and it explicitly protects religious freedom. The First Amendment guarantees the free exercise of religion, and courts have repeatedly ruled that acts of charity, such as feeding the hungry, are a fundamental expression of religious belief. If you pass this ordinance, you are setting San Clemente up for a costly legal battle that you will lose. There is clear precedence. In Big Heart Ministries versus the city of Dallas, a federal court struck down a similar ordinance, ruling that it violated religious freedoms. In First Vagabond's Church of God versus the city of Orlando, the church recognized that feeding the homeless was an integral part of religious practice and ruled against the city's restrictions. And in Western Presbyterian Church versus the Board of Zoning Adjustment, the court affirmed that feeding the poor is a religious activity protected under the First Amendment and the Religious Freedom Restoration Act. Let me remind you that local ordinances cannot override constitutional law. If you pass this measure, you will be inviting lawsuits that will drain taxpayers' dollars and force the city to defend an ordinance that is both unconstitutional and unenforceable. The Department of Justice has previously intervened in cases like this, and the civil rights attorney will waste no time filing legal challenges. Beyond the legal consequences, there is the moral failure. The ordinance criminalizes kindness. It punishes churches and individuals for answering a basic human need, and something every major religion commands. It forces people to choose between their faith and the law, and that is a line the government has no right to cross. I urge you, do not let the city become a cautionary tale. Vote no on this unconstitutional, inhumane, and legally indefensible ordinance. I leave you with Matthew 25:40. You can all look it up, since you're all Christians. Have a great day.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Rhonda, followed by Patty Vititis, followed by Maura Michaelak.
I am here with Help Who Sees Unhoused and Housing Is Human, right, Orange County. The picture that you posted, who's to say that was litter by unhoused people because only unhoused people litter? That is laughable. Also, whose decision is it of you to say what unhoused people can eat? And saying you can only serve them certain things? That's not your decision to make. I'm sorry. I'll leave it to them to tell you what is legal and what is not legal, and what is moral and what is not moral. But I will also say, my sister-in-law is unhoused, and she relies solely on the kindness of strangers for her food every day. And for you to try to take that away from her is morally irreprehensible and unkind. That's all.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Patty Vititis, followed by Maura Michaelak, followed by Sarah Martin.
Good evening. My name's Patty Vititis. I'm a 10-year resident of San Clemente, more than 30 years in South County. And I've already sent in a letter explaining why I feel you should vote no on this, from the standpoint of just being a decent human being, why I feel that it's immoral and mean. Tonight, I'm going to be wearing my San Clemente resident hat instead, and talk about fiscal responsibility. This proposed ordinance is going to cost money. It's going to cost money to implement. It says it'll be minimal, but each permit, which is supposedly for one day, will have to be processed. Someone will have to verify that the requirements were met for each and every one of those one-day permits. The administration, it's going to cost y'all. Second cost would be enforcement. Who enforces this? Who decides who's a family, who's a group that you can share your food with? And who's going to be patrolling for that? Does this fall under code enforcement, security, police? Those are all paid positions, so someone's going to be not checking traffic or something else to see if the pizza is being shared with a family, or maybe a church group, or whatever else. And as others have pointed out, the third and biggest expense is going to be the legal one. I'm not a lawyer, but it seems that this would be a civil rights lawyer's dream. They could challenge based on freedom of religion, speech, privacy, assembly. And to go to the privacy and assembly ones, if I'm at the beach with five or six other people sitting there, and we're sharing a pizza, are you going to check IDs to see if we're all related? Do people have to bring an affidavit saying that we knew each other before that? Or you're going to see if we're talking about the Bible? I don't know. You know, it's, it's, as others have pointed out, you'll lose. And this does nothing to really help our fellow residents. People will still be hungry. Faith groups will be saddled with all sorts of extra bureaucracy. And we could be spending the money in a positive way. You know, sand replenishment, pier maintenance, if your people were here, trail maintenance, schools, after-school programs, traffic enforcement, small businesses. There's a lot of other really worthy places to spend the tax money than on defending this. So that's my point. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Maura Michaelak, followed by Sarah Martin, followed by Saul Martin, followed by Kathy S. Fahani.
Hi, Council. My name's Maura Michaelak. I'm a resident of Capistrano Beach, but I work in San Clemente all the time with people who are unhoused. I made this really great PowerPoint presentation, but I didn't get it in in time, because I was giving peanut butter sandwiches out to people, strangers, in fact. And sorry if that's disrespectful, but this whole thing is so ludicrous to me. I'm kind of crazy about it. So just a little history. I know a lot of you already know this, but history of San Clemente and the criminalization of people who are homeless, and the people who tried to reach out to them with human kindness. I mean, the city has had, like, fake landscape projects, you know, where they close parks down for months, and then maybe eventually the landscape project takes place. So the city residents are losing parks when that kind of thing happens. I'm just thinking of all the rights that your citizens are losing. They shut down the green space by the Ole Hansen Pool because of the caterers there. They have the right to that space on the weekends, but really, it was because unhoused people were spending a little too much time there. So now even the residents can't spend time in that grassy area. What else? Oh, so you can't go up on the platform of the train without a train ticket. That was an ordinance that the council passed, because, oh, sorry, and, and, you know, unhoused and unhoused residents will go up on the platform, because that's the best place to see the sunset sometimes. And let's see, what else can I say? Oh, tents. This was in my PowerPoint, pictures of tents. So residents, regular residents can't have a normal tent on the beach to keep their, you know, little kids in, or let the kids play in, because you passed, previous councils passed an ordinance where the tents had to be open on both sides. So it's just crazy that, like, in order to control, like, a tiny percentage of the population of San Clemente, that these overreaching ordinances are passed? It's, it's just kind of crazy. Let me think what else I can say. So Councilman Loeffler, I, your comments were funny in the Register, because you were very clear that it was targeting these religious groups and people who are unhoused. And that was probably not a very good idea, because, like other people have said, you know, the lawsuits, because I, for one, will never, well, I'm pretty much a law-abiding citizen, but even if this passed, I'm going to share food with hungry people. You can't legislate, I don't know if that's the right term, at the city level, you can't legislate human kindness. I mean, it's, it's crazy. Thanks for your time.
Next speaker?
Sarah Martin, followed by Saul Martin, followed by Kathy S. Fahani.
You're, you need to speak for the podium.
I'll just beware, but children have to look at that, just so you know. All right. Yeah. So please don't
Go ahead. Your time is, your time is running. Go ahead.
All right. Okay. Hi, everyone. Thank you so much. I appreciate all of you, this wonderful city, and all the wonderful, caring people here. And I am here, and apparently there is a North Beach Association meeting, so a lot of the North Beach residents, that was already planned months ago, and so that's where they're at tonight. And so unfortunately, they're not able to share hands on what's going on there. But there are a lot of residents who have had multiple issues, and it's created a significant public safety issue in the North Beach community. Just to mention a few, including our public officers, I think somebody had mentioned that, the possibility of lawsuits, and if, it's been, at one point, I was well aware that there were needles on the beach in the area, and the lifeguards knew to wear needles, and I would see two-year-olds crawling on the beach, and they didn't know, you know, and how sad would that be if a kid stepped or crawled on a needle, and the city was aware that this was a problem. And the city, if you look at the call logs, there's multiple drug deals going down with the same people that are eating at that, that are getting fed. The people that are getting fed have been arrested for assaulting our residents, and they're getting fed breakfast every single morning. They're not from our community originally. So what, what does this do for our residents? Okay, I was in visiting, I'm all for helping our people in our community and loving them. I was in I was in visiting with an eighty-five-year-old this week. I spent an hour and a half with her on Valentine's Day. She was a widow. And she told me that she couldn't go down to Ole Hansen anymore because she felt intimidated because she had been yelled at by the transients in the area. So this is our community. These are loving people that are trying to get by. She's suffering. She's a widow. And she can't even go to our local community because she's scared because she's been threatened. There's multiple residents who have been attacked by these, these people, the same people. If you look, the same people who are being fed every day at this Bible study. And I personally have asked the men at the Bible study, hey, can you guys have this at your church? And if you feel that strongly, why don't you open it up and let them live at your place as well? Right? They can, they have shelter there, right? Because everyone knows at 8:00 AM where they're staying. They're staying somewhere out in the cold, right? So all these people here, I, I ask you, why don't you open up your houses? Because there's only maybe seven or eight of them. So why don't you open up your houses and feed them all the time? And then you can do your good deeds and keep our places safe. And if they're deemed unsafe people, then why would you want them at our beaches? All right. Thank you so much. And that was very rude to talk over me, too. Thank you.
I didn't hear that last, I didn't hear the last statement because someone yelled out. Can you, can you give her time?
You want to finish the last four, five, six seconds of your presentation? There, we, there was some noise in the back and we couldn't quite hear.
Okay. Yeah, I was just saying that if they're deemed to be unsafe at the churches, like the churches don't want to feed them at their places, but they want to go to public beaches where there are kids? Like, how is this okay? It's like, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Saul Martin, followed by Kathy S. Fahani, followed by Warren Vedreen.
Hi, I'm Saul Martin, and I'm a resident of the Los Playas neighborhood. And I support the proposed ordinance for two main reasons. The first reason is that I support, I think that homeless people should be fed on private property. I've spent many hours volunteering at homeless shelters, and I think that's an appropriate way to, for outreach to the homeless population. But I don't, I don't go walk up to homeless drug addicts on the beach and hand them cash or food because I don't want them hanging out on the beach and I don't want them spending the cash on alcohol or drugs. So the beach is a good place for people to hang out, relax, and obey the laws. I don't think it's a good place to create an attractive nuisance for the homeless drug addicts who I regularly encounter down there. So the second reason that I support the ordinance is that I walk and surf at North Beach almost daily. And so I could see up close the results of the way the feedings and the handouts at North Beach have resulted in unsafe situation there. I've personally been assaulted. I see the discarded leftovers from the feedings and the handouts. And I would just encourage all the organizations that want to help the people, the homeless drug addicts that hang out at North Beach, that they should do it on private property and not create a public nuisance by doing it at North Beach. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Kathy S. Fahani. I live in North Beach. I feel it's a very safe and beautiful area. And I don't understand the last two comments. But anyway, there are many reasons you should reject this mean-spirited ordinance. But rather than shoot all the fish in the barrel, I will only talk about two of those reasons. I am a lawyer, so I will focus on why adopting this ordinance would be a foolish, expensive mistake. Put simply, the ordinance is clearly unconstitutional, and it will make San Clemente the target of multiple lawsuits, all of which the city will lose, resulting in the payment of money to plaintiffs and the payment of their attorney's fees. It is no secret that the proposed ordinance targets two local Christian groups who regularly share food and fellowship at North Beach with people experiencing homelessness. Mr. Loeffler admitted it as much in his comments to the OC Register today. What could possibly be wrong with the city's decision to criminalize the religiously motivated act of feeding poor people? Well, the First Amendment to the United States Constitution protects the free exercise of religion. Federal courts have long recognized that acts of charity, including feeding the poor, are, quote, "in every respect, a religious activity and a form of worship." In my letter to you, I cited some of the relevant federal case law holding that charitable acts like feeding the poor are protected by the First Amendment as well as other federal statutes. Make no mistake, an ordinance that requires targeted Christian groups to obtain a city-issued permit, insurance, inspections, and licenses before engaging in the charitable distribution of food to unhoused strangers at the beach will substantially burden these groups' free exercise of religion, clearly violating the First Amendment and other federal statutes. There is, of course, yet another legal problem with the proposed ordinance. It requires you to get a permit to distribute food to, quote, "unknown persons or strangers," but no permit is required to share food where all persons in the party are previously acquainted. Will authorities interrupt social gatherings at the beach to investigate how well guests know each other? Which gatherings will get interrupted? Unless the city starts vetting every beach party to ensure all attendees are previously acquainted, the city will also be liable for violating the equal protection clause of the Fourteenth Amendment. San Clemente residents do not want this extreme government intrusion into our social gatherings, nor do we want to waste taxpayer money defending the city's clear violation of the U.S. Constitution and other federal laws. Please reject this ordinance. Thank you.
Warren Vedreen, followed by Donna Vedreen, followed by George Gregory. Is Warren Vedreen here?
Looks like Warren is running late. Can somebody read?
Did you address this issue earlier?
No.
During oral conversations?
I did not.
I thought you addressed.
This is specific to the, this is specific.
You addressed the Register article regarding the comments about this ordinance?
No. I was addressing the article from the paper today. This is specific to this ordinance.
Go right ahead.
Okay.
Go right ahead.
All right. Thank you. Warren's not here. Can someone in the audience read his comments? Okay. Thank you. Can I go first and then have somebody read?
Your time is running right now. You have your three minutes, so go right ahead.
Okay. Dear, dear mayor and city council members, I am writing to express my strong opposition to the proposed municipal Code Amendment, Chapter 8, Point 26, regarding the distribution of food and drink on public property. San Clemente already has numerous regulations in place requiring permits for the distribution of food and drinks in public spaces. This additional ordinance is unnecessary and places an undue burden on residents and visitors who simply wish to share food or offer hospitality in our community. Public property in San Clemente is owned by the people, and taxpayers fund the upkeep of these spaces. If I wish to share a sandwich or a bottle of water with someone on the streets who appears hungry or offer a cold drink to someone without shelter on a hot day, this ordinance would make my actions unlawful and subject to enforcement and financial penalties. This is not only an infringement on personal freedoms, but also an affront to my values and faith. For example, if my faith group organizes a scheduled bonfire on the beach that includes a potluck, and we invite other beachgoers to join us in fellowship song and sharing food for nourishment, we would be in violation of San Clemente law under this proposed amendment. While the cost of issuing permits may be minimal, the cost of enforcing this ordinance through staff time and the impact on those who wish to help people in need are far greater. Offering food and water to those without shelter, especially in hot weather, is a matter of compassion. Dehydration and hunger can be life-threatening for people without resources, and we should not be penalized for offering help to those in need. It is my belief that sharing food with others, whether it is a sandwich for a hungry person on the street or a potluck at a public gathering, should not require a permit from city staff or an investigation by code enforcement. The city should not impose penalties on Good Samaritans or community members who are simply trying to offer kindness and nourishment to others. Regarding the enforcement of this ordinance, I would like to understand what gaps has the city identified that puts the health and safety of residents and visitors at risk? I am unaware of any issues that would justify such an overreach into personal freedoms. I respectfully ask that you do not move forward with the approval of this code amendment. This proposed ordinance will burden, thank you.
Next speaker.
George Gregory, followed by Louise Herbert, followed by Tom Streeter.
George Gregory, North Beach. I've seen it. I've lived it. You got a bleeding heart? Here's a Band-Aid. I've signed a paper swearing out a warrant for homeless who've tried to attack me. Me, I'm a fairly good-sized fella. He had more kills in Vietnam than anybody, and he was going to get me. He was pooping on the side of the Miramar Theater. So you don't think sanctuary cities like Santa Ana affect the surrounding communities? Yes, they do. You don't think this event on the beach affects the surrounding community? Yes, it does. So the thing is, if we're not trying to be mean, we're trying to be practical. You know, they could go to Poche's Beach where there's nobody. They could go to Cabo Beach. They could go to the state beach where let the state deal with them instead of our little government. Why don't we feed the birds? We all know why we don't feed the birds. These guys don't have feathers, but they don't have etiquette or fellowship of humanity. They're willing to come after you. They're willing to hurt you. They're willing to defecate on your community. And they've seen them do it several, several times. So please, please, pull their permit. You don't need to make this law. You need to pull their permit. Period. End of show. They can go to the state and the state can deal with it. Get off our beach. Please get off our beach. Enough is enough. This has been going on for, you know, the twenty, thirty years I've been here, over thirty years now. And this isn't the first attempt, and there'll be other attempts. And it's pretty comical how I keep hearing from people who live so far away from North Beach who don't live with it. You know how many times I get things stolen from my property? Every year, at least, at least four times. The last one was a good one. The fishing pole was out, and they grabbed it in broad daylight. Thousand-dollar custom fishing pole. I was going on a fishing trip, even missed it. Didn't even really realize it was gone yet. Because they come trolling through the neighborhood. They come trolling across our properties, and they take whatever they want. They don't care. And if you don't think you see their trash, the things that these people are giving, the water bottles, the clothes particularly, that upsets me a lot, is they get, you know, this pile of clothes, oh, I'll take that, I'll take that. And you'll just see it laying in the sand later. It's, it's, so you've got to pull the church's permit. The church has their own building. They have their own property. They have their own law. I'm not a man without empathy. But I am a person who's just disgusted and had enough of this. You know, why do bums have more rights than I do? You know, your sister's unhoused? Your sister? Why is she in your house?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Louise Herbert, followed by Tom Streeter.
Hello again, gentlemen. Thank you for allowing us to speak to you on another outrageous topic. I'll trump the last person. I've lived here for forty-one years, heading to forty-two, longer than most of you, except those born here. I am appalled with the few people who have spoken so violently about people in need. In forty-one years of living here, I have done a myriad of activities on the beach. We used to go down three, four times a month, my husband and I. We were a lot younger. But we would bring picnic lunches with us. We would see kids playing. They'd come up and ask if they could have a water or an apple or something we had out on our spread. Didn't know these kids, never thought about asking for their identification, their parents' utility bill, or anything else to prove that they were residents or that I knew them. This is absurd. Some of you pretend to be Christians up there, but you're only convenient Christians. You only take a part of the Bible that works for you in the moment. In the moment. Especially our mayor. I also recall Fourth of July activities down there for our fireworks off the pier. I'd gather friends, some from San Clemente, some from San Juan, Dana Point, and other parts beyond, where we would have twenty-five to sixty-five people there on the beach, and it would be a potluck. Again, other families coming by, sit down, have some food with us. Have a soda, have some water. Didn't know these people, but that's how we got to know them. I remember doing a bonfire on North Beach with smores and a family visiting from out of town with their Down Syndrome child wandered by, and the little boy was captivated with our smores. We didn't know them, but they, we invited them to join us. There they sat with us, and they said, everybody here in town is so welcoming and warm. And actually, you're reversing that. But convenient Christianity is what I see among three of you in particular. Do not do this. Go back to what it's about, sharing your bounty. And if you can't do that, then maybe you need to find another town to live in. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Tom Streeter, followed by Thor Johnson.
Good evening. Good evening. I'm Tom Streeter. I'm a retired gent of leisure and a resident of San Clemente. I rise to support this, this proposed ordinance, but with amendments. My fellow speakers have indicated that, as it's written, it's going to be very hard to administer. I know that our city attorney can rewrite it to make it somewhat easier to administer, make it less costly to the city and less costly to the people who are handing out food. That having been said, the underlying thrust behind this ordinance is excellent. We don't do the homeless any favors by giving them bad food. They get sick, they die on us. That's not good. If we're going to be saying, you go down to some local Mexican restaurant, you expect the restaurant to have good food. You expect it to be inspected. You can't just rely on the chef having a good day that day. It needs outside supervision. It's the same thing with people who are feeding the homeless. They need outside supervision. Otherwise, we'll get bad food to the homeless. They'll get sick. Andy Hall laid it out correctly. We are not trying to shut down food distribution. We're trying to make it safe. We've got some administration problems. We can fix those. But keep the ordinance, soup it up so as it make it more easily administered, and pass it. Let's not kill the homeless by food poisoning.
Next speaker.
Thor Johnson.
Don't, don't interrupt, please. Next speaker.
Thor Johnson, followed by Angela Watts.
Good evening, wonderful Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name is Thor Johnson, and I'm here to talk about the consequences of feeding our homeless and the criminal activity that it brings. When I was a young kid, my grandmother used to put food outside of her home for wild animals. And the more food that she would put out, the more wild animals, stray cats, raccoons, and skunks would come. And it's the same thing with homelessness. The more food that you give them, the more homeless, more criminals and more drug addicts are going to come into our town. And I don't know who in their right mind, you know, wants to bring more homeless and more criminals to our town. Now, what's interesting is my grandmother would actually open up her garage to house these wild animals. And I'm not aware of any of these individuals who are opening up their garage or their home to, to, to house these homeless people. So why does my grandmother treat wild animals better than, than these people who say they care about their homeless? And, you know, I, I think these people are just misguided, just like our governor of California, who has spent dozens of billions of dollars to try and fix homelessness to only make the problem worse. Now, the real tragedy of this are, are the residents of North Beach and the citizens of San Clemente. If you go down to the 7-Eleven on North Beach on any night, you will actually see homelessness and homeless people and drug addicts sleeping on the sidewalk every single night into the gateway of our city. How do you think the rest of the world thinks when they come into the gateway of our city and they see homeless people sleeping on the sidewalk who these people are feeding? It's not a good look. It's not a good look. And also, this group, they, they do the laundry over at South Camino Real by my apartment, and I've lived there for over 10 years. And since they've been doing that, now there's homeless people who are about the same age as me, panhandling over there on Camino Real, right next to the laundry. I haven't seen that in over 10 years. So, I think it's time that we start putting the citizens of San Clemente first, and it's time to shut these people down. Thank you.
Angela Watts.
Good evening, Angela Watts, resident of North Beach area. I just want to speak specifically of the ordinance. As Zen, Mark, I know you guys have young kids, and if Rick, Steve, and Victor, if you remember when you had young kids, during soccer, you had to all sign up for snack. And this involves distributing food to about 10, 15, 20-plus kids. So, that's what's happening at our parks. As a parent, we all sign up for snack schedules at all the sports events, and we give out food. So, don't forget, this isn't just about homeless, this is about our community, and this is the things that we do for our kids. So, let's not try to get all political if this, I, I mean, it sounds to me, hearing other people from North Beach, it's a public safety issue that their concerns are. So, let's focus on that. We have a new sheriff who's here that we can work with, and Rick, I know, public safety's your thing, so let's talk about that and focus on things like that, instead of, you know, feeding in this ordinance. It just seems a bit ridiculous and a little, little overfetched for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
That was it for speakers.
Other speakers, thank you. I guess, for council discussion, do we, any thoughts, any moments to share? Rick, you've been addressed a few times. Would you like to start?
Sure. I, you know, I, I didn't see the Register article today, so I'm not sure what they said, or what, you know, where they got their, their quotes, but I'll, you know, I'll just, I'll defer to the Register on that. Yeah, you know, and I appreciate all the comments from everyone. Everyone made good, strong, cogent statements. I, I want to talk to the people that talked about the crime on the beach and, and, and all that. That, that's kind of a separate issue from this. I wish I could say that passing this ordinance was going to reduce crime. I, I don't really feel that it probably is. I don't think it's even going to reduce the number of homeless we have. That's, that's another issue. Addressing the part about the religious freedom, and the people are here saying that it's somehow stifling religious freedom. If you were here two weeks ago, we unanimously approved the church to stay there for longer than they even had a permit for. We extended it. This isn't about religious freedom. And as far as the, and I appreciate it was Mara said she's going to still give out peanut butter sandwiches, and I, Mara, I think that's great.
Oh, you do?
Well, no, I do, because, because you do it occasionally and specific ti, you know, it's...
Every week for four years.
Okay, well, anyway.
Let's address, let's address the issue now.
So, this, this is for same time, same place, organized, giving out food to people that you don't know. This, this isn't, this isn't about the, the soccer game, Angela, I, because when you're the, the snack mom, which I've been the snack mom, it's for the people on your soccer team, and you do, yes, that, that's fine. You know the people, the parents know you. This is basically, and it's not even, I, I'm surprised, because if you, if it is two organizations, and there might be more, we, we, we don't know, everybody's going to be subject to this. It's not just North Beach, it's on public property, period. And if there's groups going to our parks and just handing out food to anybody that comes up, that doesn't sound like a good idea. So, take the homeless part of it out of the equation. I, I would hope that you would just, if there's organizations that want to do this, that they just go get a permit. It's, it's really a simple process, and that way, we know who's doing it, a contact information. If we do have to go clean it up, we know who's going to be culpable for that, and we kind of have an idea of what you're serving and all, all that. It's...
How much will you charge for...
I say, no.
Don't, don't interrupt from the audience, please.
So, anyway, I, I, I do support this, and I think it's the right thing to do. And, and if, for the people that really feel strongly that this is something that you want to do, go get a permit and keep doing it. It's, it's not, it's not banning anything. So, I, I just, I, I think other communities have done similar. I think it would be odd to think that you could just go anywhere to any public place and open up and put out a table and start serving food to people. That, that just doesn't seem right under, under any circumstance. We have a, a really great organization here at town that you can walk up anytime and, and get a meal. And I know it's, and it's permitted, and they're under the Health Department. So, if it's a hunger thing, we, there's already a city-supported entity that does that. And besides that, I, I think that, again, same place, same time, every day, should be permitted. You get a permit, it's not going to keep you from doing what you're doing. Unfortunately, it's not going to do anything to crime, I don't believe. I think this is a health and safety issue. I, I don't think it's a, a homeless or a crime issue, unfortunately. I, I hope we can think of some other resources to address the, the crime in North Beach. This probably isn't one of them, but I know it's going to make a place a safer place.
Thank you.
Yeah. I guess I'll speak, yeah. When I saw this, it had, for me, it has nothing to do with religion, I actually, or religious freedom, I actually wish the, the religious institutions would do more at their churches. I, I encourage them to do more at, at their churches, to feed the poor and the hungry, and to house them. I mean, all the time I've been here, they've spent more time urging the city to do it, rather than doing it themselves. If they would have spent the time and the energy and the money, the resources they spent trying to convince the city to do it, they, they would be better off, the homeless would be better off. So, again, I still encourage you to, to do that, to, religious institutions. When I was young, I mean, at, at my church, we had an orphanage, and we had services. And in my view, here in this community, you know, some of the institutions have gone away from that and try and force that obligation on the cities. And many, actually, I'll take that back. Many of the, the churches do it. I mean, I know, I, I have good friends in many of the churches, and they do do it religiously and effectively. They serve the food, they serve homeless, they serve people in their community, they serve the parishioners. Unfortunately, not everybody has done it, and particularly in North Beach, it hasn't been done. But this isn't about the homeless, in my view. This is a, a law of general applicability. It's to protect the health and safety of, of the community, including the homeless, to make sure that they don't get fed. There's been some discussion about this is protected by the First Amendment. That's true, except if there's, the, the exception to that is if there's a compelling state interest. And our, if we can articulate that interest, and I think we have articulated that interest, that interest, that compelling interest is to protect the health and safety of the community. And once we've established that, there's no, there's, there's no cause of action for, for, for a breach of the, the First Amendment. And I doubt very much that this Department of Justice is going to bring a, an action against us or anybody else. I, I had the, the opportunity to, to sit on the Supreme Court case on Grants Pass, and I hear what they're saying about this issue. And even though, you know, there was two members of the court that thought that the protection to be extended to things like this, there was six, six members, actually seven members, that believed that, you know, this, this kind of stuff wouldn't be covered. So, I'm, I'm, I, I don't think we're good, we might get sued, doesn't mean we'll lose. This has nothing to do with trying to attack the homeless. I, I think the city has been pretty clear that we're encouraging the churches to do more to serve the, the homeless community at their churches and at their facilities. I wish they would do more. This is just a, a rule of general applicability, in my view, that's trying to protect the homeless from getting sick and injured. That's it.
Thank you very much. Mark?
I keep hearing that, that this proposition is, is to protect the homeless, to protect them from the, the sickness, and I just, I haven't heard once any evidence that they're actually getting sick from any of these feedings. So, I, I don't, sure that I can, I can go with that argument. Now, that's not to say homelessness isn't an issue in, in North Beach. Absolutely, it is. And we have taken steps to work on that. We have reduced the numbers of homeless there. We have increased security presence there, and we are increasing our park ranger program. We are increasing our city outreach workers, and those numbers have gone down. But that's how we should be addressing them, is how can we reach out to them, and how can we enforce our laws and ordinances that are already on the books? Because the issues that we're seeing here isn't necessarily that, you know, we're feeding them. The issues are what comes along with homelessness of, and that we see drug addiction, that we see littering, and those are issues that, yeah, that they bother our residents, and, and those are against our ordinances, and, and we do need to deal with those. But I don't believe that this ordinance is a way to do that. I, I'm looking at this, you know, we can't just enforce this on one area of North Beach. We'd have to enforce this all throughout San Clemente. And last, last summer, I had a, a birthday party for my daughter on the beach. We did homemade cupcakes. We had a couple pizzas from Costco. We had them, we had leftovers. The kids ate them, the adults ate them, and we saw some teenagers walking by. They asked if they could have some. Sure. You know, my, my cupcakes were not store-bought. They were homemade. They could have, you know, caused food poisoning, they didn't, you know? But they, like, it, it just seems a little bit of an overreach. But if I were to do that this next summer, and this ordinance is passed, I, I can be ticketed. I can be, I'm, I'm seen as breaking the law by doing that, because I'm in a gathering and I'm giving food to strangers. So, it just seems a, a little bit of, of an overreach here to, to support this policy. Again, this doesn't mean that we can't find other ways to address homelessness in North Beach. And absolutely, I think there are appropriate steps, both, both ways of enforcement of our ordinances, and also having park rangers there to monitor those areas, and at the same time, doing outreach and, and community engagement. There are ways for us to, to work on this issue. But this particular one, I just don't, I, I see it as, as too narrowly focused for this particular area, and if we expand it to the rest of the city, like it is supposed to be, because it is a city ordinance, it's just going to really, it, it's going to cause us some trouble going down the line.
Thank you. Mr. Wu, would you care to weigh in?
I just decided that I want to be an Uber-Eat driver, and I want to work hard every day. So, in case I, I need to deliver food to some people in our park, or beach, or, I need to get a 365 permis every year, and I think it's, it's not very convenient, so I don't want to be an Uber-Eat driver anymore. I'm not sure what this ordinance is going to achieve. I'm not sure if it's going to solve our homeless situation. It's probably will make it a little harder for the homeless people to stay in North Beach, or reduce the attraction to that location. But it's going to disperse them, and they're still going to stay in town, perhaps at different locations. I, I comb through this ordinance, it does not have a single word, it does not say homeless, but it would be disingenuous to say that this has nothing to do with homeless. I think the important thing is, this ordinance raised, raises serious concern from, from me on the legal issues. It makes the city vulnerable, I, I guess. There's a reasonably expected allegation or assertion from some group that we're going to have some First Amendment issue, because the, the feeding homeless is expressive conduct as a free speech protected by the First Amendment. And there will be religious land use issue, and it's according to the federal statute that could preempt a local ordinance. And then there's an equal protection issue from selective enforcement. So, can the city pass muster with the court's stricter scrutiny? I don't know. In summary, I have, I have yet to be convinced that is a good idea, and I want to be prudent, so I'm not going to vote for it. With that said...
Thank you.
Okay.
We have, the, the arguments that have been made, in my opinion, are pretty strong on both, both sides of the, of the issue. The, this, the safety issue that's been brought up, and the, the debris that's left on the beach, and the results of this, I think we have a ranger, our park rangers can easily address the debris, the littering issues with citations, and potentially arrests in egregious situations. I think those issues can be addressed. My concern is with just the, the freedom to do what's currently being done. You know, a lot of scripture was thrown around tonight, a lot of criticisms for those with faith and those without faith. But, you know, it seems to me that if Jesus was feeding the 5,000, and he had 12 baskets full of food left over after they'd eaten a few fishes and a few loaves, that there would probably be a little bit of debris laying around. And I think if the city of Capernaum had a, had an ordinance, then Jesus would have been himself in trouble, potentially. But, you know, I, I think the issues of, of safety and security and trash can be addressed with our park rangers, and I think people that have in their, in their minds and hearts a desire to help people, I, I think we shouldn't be hindering that at all. And I do think that we need safe beaches, we need to clean beaches, and those, those issues can be addressed. So, those are, those are my concerns. Do we have a, have a motion?
Mayor, I'd like to mo, I'd like to move that we decline to introduce the ordinance.
Your motion was what, to decline the...
My motion is to decline to introduce the ordinance.
Is that, is that proper? Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. There are no substitute motions. All enough, let's, uh, vote, I guess, is your, is our electronics queued up?
I will add in the votes now. Let's see, okay. Okay.
The motion passes. Next, uh, next item on our agenda is item 10B, contract award for website design and content management systems, approving a 10% management contingency. Mr. City Clerk, do you have a, Madam City Clerk, do you have a presentation?
Yes.
Brian Brower, Administrative Services Director, here to present to you a brief presentation about the potential contract award for website design services and content management system. Here with us tonight also is Cade Boiserank, Senior IT Analyst. I think he's going to be joining me up here at the microphone in a moment. So, over the past several months, the city conducted a request for proposal process. Through this process, 15 proposals were received. 15 proposals were received and evaluated by staff. They were, we identified three leaders amongst that group, and went through an in-depth interview and demonstration phase, in which a team of myself, the senior IT analyst, the public information coordinator, and the city's community development director went through extensive review of, of those products. And then ultimately, we have come to the recommendation of awarding the contract to Civic Plus. I, I should note that Civic Plus had the higher overall ranking of, of the firms, of all 15 firms, and of also of the, the three that were interviewed and provided demonstrations. While they were the highest overall ranking, they were not the lowest cost. I do have some information that this was, this came up in a briefing today, I want to make sure that everybody has it. The Civic Plus three-year total cost of ownership is $168,000 approximately. The next in line was $146,000, and then beyond that... And then beyond that, the next contender was $160,000 over three years. But the staff recommendation, due to the fact that this was an RFP process and the award can go to the best overall solution, not necessarily the absolute lowest bidder, we're making the recommendation to move forward with Civic Plus. Some priorities with the new website. The number one and number two, probably number two and number one, is user experience and improved searchability. We've heard many times over recent years that it's difficult to find things on the city's current website at Last Count, which took place this evening by Mr. Boiserank. We have 430 pages on our website. We don't have a shortage of information on our website, but it is very difficult to find the information that people are after. And so the primary driver behind this project is to not only have the correct information on the website, but make it easier for the public to find that information. And that'll continue to be a priority throughout the project. So through the user experience and also improved searchability functions, we hope to achieve that goal. There are a few add-ons to this website, which are things that we either haven't previously had here at the city of San Clemente, or we've paid a third-party service, not not joined with our website company to 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 perform those duties. The the number one option is what what's branded as C Click Fix, which is a 311 or CRM system. To put it in simple terms, it's a service listing. So that with the new website, there's going to be a single pane of glass, a single screen that you can go to if you're on a computer or a single app that you can download on your phone. And this is how residents or anybody who travels through our community can either request information, lodge complaints with the city, or find online services. Basically, it's a one-stop shop where whether you're asking a question of the city manager or reporting a complaint about a broken water line or, what are some more examples, Cade?
Potholes.
Potholes, that's a popular one. These things, there's a single portal where people can make these complaints. And then those complaints automatically get routed to the right personnel to address those complaints or work orders. The proposed solution also comes with a product called AudioEye, which is a method of maintaining continuous and ongoing accessibility. So that right now, we have a service that that sort of periodically reviews our website and points out issues that need to be corrected to meet accessibility standards. This is a much more advanced and real-time situation with dealing with that challenge. And then lastly, I've listed here Civic Send. This is a an outbound communication portal that sort of takes the place of a number of things right now. To to date, we have a website that can send emails on a particular topic. So we have residents that sign up for, for example, our city council meeting agendas. And every two weeks, they get an email to them from the website. This expands upon that. It would take the place of the the online messaging that recreation does through one product. And then also, we we use a different product for daily street sweeping notification. All those things would be rolled into this one function of the new website. A little bit about the project and who the stakeholders are and who we'll be reporting to. The primary project team for the city will be the Senior IT Analyst, which is Cade, and also the Public Information Coordinator, which is Miley Stivers. Also overseeing the project would be myself and our Community Development Director. There'll be a number of other staff from different departments and divisions that are involved in the design and the content and the ongoing administration of the website. And then throughout the development and implementation process, we'll be meeting with the city manager regularly to to communicate up through the city council briefing process so we can keep the council informed of how things are going. We'll probably have some mockups at some point that we'll share with folks and and kind of move forward and communicate the progress of the project as best we can. Not sure what I just did there. Project timeline. There's a bunch of detail here. The the the, if you if you do the math and you add up the various estimated timelines for each of these different phases of the project, you end up with somewhere between 16 and 28 weeks. This does depend somewhat on the vendor, but largely it depends on city staff and how available we are to the vendor and how readily we provide information to the vendor and work with them. And staff is committed to working, moving forward with all deliberate speed and getting this done as quickly as possible. So I would estimate somewhere between four and five months for completion. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of staff on this item?
Was there any, not that we have to do this now, but I would love in the future to to see like a a display of this website. And then also, do you have a timeline of of when this is going to be implemented?
The, as far as showing what it's going to look like, there's going to be some mockups pretty early on, some wireframing that happens with the developers. And we'll be sharing that with the council through council briefings, through the city manager's office. As far as timeline, low end, four months, high end, six months. But we're we're gunning for four.
Great.
So so every city in the state, in the country has has a website. And some of them are really good. So are we going to be able to see, do we take a look at which ones are the best? And 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 model our, are we going to model them after those? Or is this unique? Are we starting from zero and creating something new?
The company we are selecting has done hundreds of these recently. And so if you if you browse nationwide, you'll probably find that a lot of the favorites were were provided by this provider.
Okay.
And we we don't currently have a plan to directly model ours after a particular city that we've already seen. But these folks, they do it all day, every day. And I think they're going to come up with some really clean mockups really early on, and we'll we'll go from there.
One of the biggest frustrations I've had with the website is the search capability. So, you know, you want you want to search like donations to a city council member, and you will get something completely unrelated back in 10 years ago, you know, that has nothing to do with what you what you queried. Will that function be improved also?
That functionality will be greatly improved, yes.
I didn't know you could donate to a council member from the city website.
Not exactly.
Not exactly, okay. Go back to the council member, and Myers' question about the look of it. Early on in the process, we're going to be providing examples and the the company's going to be evaluating our, you know, interviewing staff. And and they're going to come up with this idea, this branding for San Clemente. So while the website will be unique to San Clemente, it'll follow a general template that's been most successful for other municipalities.
Rick or?
I'm good.
Yeah. Brian, share with us a little bit about the consideration of lifecycle cost. The previous, the current version was about 10 years ago. So I would imagine that maybe every 10 years, we do a major overhaul. So considering this project being a setup of cost for the new version, what is ongoing maintenance cost in the future years before we do another overhaul, say, in 10 years?
The current pricing for the ongoing, I want to get this right. Current pricing for the annual, ongoing annual cost is $49,000 per year.
I'd like to add that if we stay with Civic Plus for four years, it kicks in an additional, a free uplift or not an uplift, I'm sorry.
Did you speak into your microphone a little closer?
If we stay with with Civic Plus for four years and we commit to that, we get a a website remodel after the fourth year. So, you know, as trends change and as styles change, we'll be able to to pivot with that if we continue with this service.
Okay, thank you. A question regarding the 10% contingency. Is that on top of 168? Is that 10% across the board?
It's on top of the year one cost, I believe, which was the on top of the 168. That is purely in case we run into something where there's a feature that we encounter through the development process that we did not actually contract for with this vendor. They have a number of different modules. We think we have it completely nailed down, but it would give the city manager flexibility to authorize what would be essentially a change order.
From a technical point of view, if this company goes forward with this contract, are we allowed to bring other companies in to add additional elements that we didn't envision? Or is that difficult?
I I can't imagine that they would allow us to integrate directly into their platform, but the platform would allow for us to frame in any other website.
I guess the reason why I ask that is because I I've never seen a contract where a contingency has been allowed, that a contingency hasn't been requested, and that somehow there'll be a, there'll be something that someone didn't envision that's going to eat up that 10%. It's only $16,000, but still, it's a fair amount of money. Have you really done a thorough job, in your opinion, Brian, of really zeroing down to make sure we're getting what we need? And I ask that because Victor's comment about the search mode, it's it's terrible. I had a citizen call me today, yesterday, I believe it was, and said, the city manager mentioned something about putting that Border Patrol number on your website. I can't find it. I tried to find it. Took me 10 minutes because I'm not, I'm not a techie, so that's understandable. But it took me 10 minutes, I still couldn't find it. And I had to go back through a string of emails to find it. I guess the the search mode should, could be so simple. You go to any organization, you hit a word that that you're looking for, and the organization pulls it up. In our, in our system, boy, it just doesn't do that. And I'm I'm hoping you zero down far enough that there's not going to be a problem.
I believe we have. I believe we have. I think we've zeroed in on all the components. I think we took a very thorough effort at it. That's part of why it's taken a few extra weeks to get this to the council. And as far as the search functionality, I, again, I think it's going to be one of the number one criteria for success for just about anybody, anybody who's in this room. And we're not going to let, we're not going to lose sight of that vision.
Okay, all right, thank you. I I'm going to trust you that you were very, very thorough. Okay, I don't have any other questions unless there's any, do we have any public comments on this item? I'll entertain a motion if there is one.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number 2517.
Do we have a second?
We're seconded.
Okay, the motion's been made by Mr. Myers, seconded by Mr. Cabral. Let's vote. Well, passes five to zero. Thank you very much. The next item is our consent calendar. And do we have any requests to pull that for discussion, Madam Clerk from the audience?
Yes, we do have two requests to speak. The first one is on item 11D, Amanda Quintanilla. She mentioned she may have to leave, and I don't see her out here.
11B and what's the other?
Patricia Holloway on item 11F. So I think Amanda is gone.
I'm sorry, 11F as in Frank?
11F as in Frank, yes.
Hello, counsel. I'd like to compliment the Public Works Department for naming the streets that are included in the proposed fiscal year 2025 Street Rehabilitation Program. The last time I saw a document on this program in 2024, it said various streets in the city, but it didn't, you know, express any specific location. So I appreciate that that's been done with this document. I appreciate that very much. In reviewing the proposal, I noticed that for these street and sidewalk improvements, I noticed that their tree roots were listed in a few locations that were, you know, apparently causing some damage. Thus, we need to, you know, provide a new sidewalk. So my question is this, if the city needs to remove a tree in order to, you know, properly repair the street or the sidewalk, do we budget for replacing that tree either in the same location or, you know, somewhere else that's more suitable? So is that integrated into this street rehab program? My hope is that we look at street projects as opportunities to provide multiple benefits for improving the pedestrian experience, the bicycling, the vehicle, you know, vehicle, vehicle travel throughout our town. These upgrades should not only include preserving existing trees where possible. So we need to be doing that, but also replacing those trees that must be removed. Also planting new street trees where they don't currently exist. So in other words, if you're going to go in there and you're going to, you know, replace the street and curb and gutter, and you're going to put in new sidewalks, let's put in new trees at the same time. Because if you're not doing that, you know, the, I guess you're going to have somebody else coming in, you know, months or years later, tearing up the sidewalk to put in the street trees. I mean, let's do it as an integrated, integrated program because realistically, that never happens. The 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 street trees will come out, you know, because they're harming the sidewalk. We're not planting new trees, and we're not going back after the fact to plant trees later. So that means we're losing our our tree canopy in our community and all the benefits that that provides. You know, I can, you know, list some of them, beauty, shade, erosion control, stormwater management, wildlife habitat, but also, okay, there we go. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, did you want to comment on that for the benefit of the council? Just the integration of the tree issues and so forth?
As always, Ms. Holloway made great points. We are Tree City USA, and we want to make sure that we are replacing any trees that that get taken out with the appropriate trees. The other thing we've been talking about lately is making sure that we plant trees the right way, maybe with sunken wells, so that we don't interrupt the sidewalks, putting in tree grates and tree wells and some of those kinds of things. So, yeah, absolutely, there's never enough trees in any community, including this one.
Thank you. We have another, before we go to the entire consent calendar, we had another speaker on 11B.
Amanda?
Amanda said she might have to leave, and I don't see her in the audience. So, yep, so I think that that's it.
Then I'll have to take a motion.
Let's have Dave speak since he's standing there. No, no, I I made a motion.
Oh, actually, can I, I would like to actually just pull 11D. That's okay. Yes, just to, as a congratulations, to talk about it.
Okay, do we, does your motion, then, Victor, include everything but 11D? And we can?
What what are we going to?
11D that?
Wants to pull 11D for discussion.
Yes, sure.
So your motion includes everything but 11D?
Yeah.
Okay, that's a motion. Do we have a second? Motion's made and seconded. Let's vote once soon as we get queued up here.
Councilmember Lefler, are you, do you need? Are you in support or opposition of? I, okay, I will vote yes for you, and that carries 5-0.
Okay, we have a 5-0 on the consent calendar with the exception of 11D. And Mark or Addie Head, do you have questions?
Yeah, no, I'm just really excited to to hear about this program. I thought it'd be great for have the city tell the population about about what this grant is about. $1.8 million awarded to us for Clean Mobility. This is something we should be celebrating. Congratulations to staff on getting this grant. Would you be willing to to just share one or two words on on what this grant does and and what it'll do for the the city?
Sure, I actually do have a presentation. I won't go through the full thing, but there's some visuals that might be beneficial. And so I think Megan can get that on the screen for us in just one moment. Rewinding briefly for some history, in March of 2023, the council directed staff to apply for this grant. So we did that in the the months following. There were a couple of rounds, so we were not selected in the initial round, but in a follow-up in December, it's a two-stage application. So we were invited to apply for the second stage of the application last year and notified in December of the intent to award this grant. The next step is what we have tonight, is it's up to council to determine whether or not to authorize the city manager to execute this agreement. So we we can move forward to the, actually, I have the, there we go. Broadly, this was a grant that's provided out of CARB that provides up to one, it was originally 1.5 million, and they boosted that figure to 1.8. And the criteria are, it's a pilot program, so intended to introduce local governments to electric or hydrogen, et cetera, options for shuttles, last mile solutions, things of that sort. And also, the other component of eligibility- of that sort. And also, the other component of eligibility is the city or county must have a low-income community, or there's a couple of other geographic identifications. That's shown here on the left. The two blue areas are what make us, as an entity, eligible to apply for this application. So the pilot program does not have a fixed route. That's something that could be discussed over the next year, should council approve this program. Then we would do some outreach to talk about what the stops and locations and the vehicles selected would be. The draft budget included this vehicle that's shown on the top right that staff felt was similar in look and feel to what our trolleys are. It's just a smaller version. And so our grant application includes four of those vehicles. We would have to operate for the four-year term along the route between these locations. At the conclusion of that period, the city could use those vehicles as it sees fit. This map here shows, just broadly, the overlap of our blue route, red in the center, green on the right. And then that yellow is a sense of what the connection could be between those blue areas to move between the North Beach area and inland along Avenue de Pico. The timeline, we're at that first bubble there on the left. The first year would be administration elements, outreach to the community, ordering vehicles before beginning operations next summer. It's a four-year program. This next slide is similar, but just shows what's funded by the grant and what the onus on the city would be. The city staff would handle the outreach component at the front end. The grant funds the purchase of those vehicles, as well as full operations for three years. That's what the 1.8 million includes. The city contribution would be the final year of operations, which comes out to $534,000. So that's, sorry, rewinding, this is the recommendation that's included within the staff report that addresses the voucher agreement, as well as what would be required as the city contribution, which would be in fiscal year 2029.
Thank you, Mr. Lefler. I'm so excited and thrilled for this, to have our increase of public transportation and to bring our communities together. So thank you for that presentation.
Thank you.
I wanted, I was going to let this go through without expressing my concerns about it, because I do have a lot of concerns about it. My biggest concern is that at the end of year three, I guess, we then get saddled with the burden of operating this at a cost of $500,000, and that may be in perpetuity, right? Where we're required, or is it just for one year that we're required to spend that half a million dollars?
The voucher agreement covers just up through that fourth year of service. So the city would only be obligated for funding one year of service. And then beyond that, it's up to the city whether they would be interested in continuing.
So I want to make sure that even if we approve this, we're not really committing yet to this project. We're just exploring with them. Because I don't even see that route. I mean, we don't have a route yet. We'll have to develop a route, and I hope that we would have a route before we finally approve this, because I don't see any value of adding a route to, what's the area where it?
Up in, east and west on Pico.
No, no, it's not.
And Maxberg Park.
The way I read it, it was up to the Maxberg Park to the...
City Hall.
To City Hall?
Yeah.
And I just don't see the value of that necessarily, of that route. I think there are routes that would be better served. And we do actually serve Maxberg right now. So I'd like to continue serving them, maybe expand all the way down to South San Clemente. But I'm not sure of the value of spending this money. It's free money, but it's not really free money, because we obligate ourselves to that. And once we have a program, it's hard to get rid of programs. I mean, we would be in this program, yeah, maybe forever, having to serve City Hall. And I don't know that there's that many people that want to come to City Hall on a daily basis. We're running a trolley every 15 minutes. It just doesn't see, it doesn't make sense to me right now. But I think if we can move forward, we can start working with staff, what would really work for this city, what routes would really work passing through Maxberg, or at least on the Pacific Coast Highway, taking it maybe down to South San Clemente or some other area. We can still do that. There's still time in this process to work all that out, right?
Absolutely, there is to determine the route. I just want to be clear, though, that tonight, the request, or what the action item in front of you is, is authorization of the voucher agreement. So while there would be time to work out what that route looks like before committing to a route, we would be committing to the full five-year program. That's the resolution that's in front of you. So within the first year, that is the intent, to have discussion with community members. If you live in one of these areas, what are the destinations that you want to go to? We do need to have those two blue areas on the screen be the anchors. That's what makes us eligible for this grant. But otherwise, we do have flexibility.
What are the, Maxberg Park?
So Maxberg Park was identified simply as a destination of familiarity. That's central within that lower blue area on the map. We wouldn't have to have that be the primary location. Anywhere within that blue area that is between North Beach and the pier is one node of service, and then Rancho San Clemente would be the other node of service. So that east-west corridor would be the general route, and the final stops would be determined over the next year.
Well, I'm not just talking about stops. I'm talking about, that would have to be, that's essentially the route that we would have to follow?
It does need to service those two areas. That's what makes us eligible for this grant.
Can't go beyond those two areas into Toledo?
So we have, I have discussed branching off with the program administrator. So we already have authorization to hit locations such as the outlets, the high school, the area right across from Rancho San Clemente, Walmart.
But not beyond these two blue areas?
It should be between the blue areas or immediately, or a service area that's immediately adjacent.
So I'm not done yet.
Don't go right ahead.
I'm actually concerned. I mean, maybe it's a good idea. I don't know that the residents of Maxberg Park want a trolley every 15 minutes. Maybe they do want a trolley coming into Maxberg Park every 15 minutes, or however frequently they will come. Has that been evaluated yet? Have we talked to the residents there? Do they want that trolley coming in around Maxberg Park?
We haven't yet, because we haven't begun the outreach process. The first stage, if council decides to move forward with this program, we would have an outreach event at the Cinco de Mayo event, which occurs at Maxberg Park. So we'll be doing that in conjunction with the parking study that's already ongoing.
So it looks, I look on the map, and it also looks like it passes in front of the school there, right?
Correct.
Okay, yeah. You know, they have enough concerns right now about traffic, and to have a trolley there every 15 minutes seems a bit excessive, in my view. But maybe, I could be wrong. I'll leave it to the, you know, your outreach. What I'm most concerned about at this point in time is that we make a commitment to this project, commit a half a million dollars to this with no way out, and the community says, "No, no, we don't want, we don't want you coming into the community." That's my biggest, do we have any way out of this if we commit tonight? Or is this, could you use time to further study and further evaluate this before, and come back to us with alternative routes, you know, based on the input of citizens and the community? It just seems a bit premature right now.
We would have some time. The deadline to execute the voucher agreement is May 25.
Okay.
So for instance, we would have the opportunity of having that one public engagement with them ahead of that deadline. But we then, if there's not an action tonight, would have to plan for an opportunity for the council to address that at a later point, if you don't want to take action on it this evening.
Yeah. What would be our total commitment, then, at this point in time? If we went forward with this, how many years would we be on the hook for payment? One, two?
You'd be on the hook for one year, and the grant would pay for three years.
And after four years, we could stop it, then?
Correct.
And, you know, what happens to the buses? Do we keep them?
We get to keep them.
Okay, that's a benefit. I, I'm a bit concerned. I mean, when you get free stuff, you sometimes say, "Let's take it," without thinking about the long-term consequences of it. I think it could work. I'm just not sure that we're there at this point in time. And I would like at least to spend another week, maybe to the next meeting, to...
Look at the route configuration?
To look at the route configuration and see if there's a way to, working with them to see if there's a better utilization of this, because I just don't, I don't see many people going from Maxberg Park to City Hall. And, but maybe, I mean, maybe they'll come from the...
But just to be clear, this route is not set in stone, right?
Correct.
Yeah. So tonight's not about voting on the route. Tonight's just voting to approve this process of going forward.
Well, it kind of is, though.
It kind of is.
Because we're limited to these two areas.
We are limited.
That's the only areas. So you can't go up here or down here. You have to stick with these areas.
How do we identify those two areas and why those two areas, as opposed to where a lot of people are in South City, where there's always a big demand for...
Yeah, fair question. There's a couple of legislative, I believe it's AB 1055, that established a mapping system to identify what low-income community means and to map those. So this image comes from a state-mapped area. So those are the locations that are eligible under this grant. As far as the north and south corridor, the intent would be to have this overlap a couple of the existing trolley stops. Our OCTA grant was approved. That's not daily service, but summer service, including the Green Line that was piloted recently, will be a regular part of our operations, which will then carry people from the outlets all the way south to the city border.
Mr. Mayor, unless there's other conversation, I'd like to make a motion.
Any other questions or staff questions?
I have some questions and comments. First of all, I thought we're getting $25, 25 cents for a dollar. That's a great deal. But then I also see on your presentation that city is responsible for purchasing the vehicle. Is that extra money?
No, that would be covered by the grant.
Oh, okay. On the map, the lower part of the map ends at the pier, but on your page two, on your staff report, page two, it says, "In San Clemente, the AB 1550 Low-Income Community Geography that is eligible under this program is west of Interstate 5, south of Avenue de Pico, and north of Avenue de Valencia. Valencia is further down, almost to where the Alcuminorial intersects with Interstate 5. So it appears to be a larger area than the blue area. Can you clarify?"
Yeah, I think that I can clarify. I pulled this map today, and it's a refreshed version from the state, which I believe was updated this year. So the original grant application aligned with the mapping that was current in 2023. So we do have approval for that blue area to go all the way to Valencia. That's in the written documentation of the intent to award. So the visual really could extend slightly further south than what we see on the screen currently.
And we go further south, crossing the State of Five to South Alcuminorial on the east side of I-5?
It would be everything north of Avenue de Valencia. So we don't have south of Avenue de Valencia within the approval.
All right. Regarding the destination, the bus stop in Rancho San Clemente, I think it's not just a city hall. Because in this area, we have Walmart, we have Steed Park, we have the City Hall, a few other places that the bus can stop.
Yeah, Mr. Lefler, you have some questions?
Yeah, so, I mean, in the summer, when we have lots of tourists and no place to park, we could pick up at the outlets, the North Beach, into the pier, right? Where there's lots of places to park, like at the outlets. That could be one of the routes.
Correct, yeah. This could potentially stop at the outlets, as well as North Beach. Any of those areas that are within the blue areas are immediately adjacent.
Which would, if we could compel people to park at the outlets and take the trolley to the pier, it would help our downtown parking.
Maybe we can also have them stop at the Vista Hermosa Sports Park. That's not too far from that.
Yeah. I think I, why I'm excited about this is, yes, it's four years, and we may be relegated to a certain route, but after those four years, we, the city owns those vehicles, correct?
Correct.
And we can then, after four years, if those routes aren't working, we can determine our own routes?
Correct.
I mean, for four years of this, having a, being able to come out with minimal cost to come with our own vehicles, I mean, this is a deal.
I'm not so sure it is. What's the value of those vehicles?
So the vehicle that is shown up there is valued at about $50,000. So that's what we have in the budget, is about $200,000 for the acquisition of four shuttles.
So we would have to spend $500,000 to get, plus we pay for the staff. So all I'm saying, you might be right. It might be, it might be good, but I just think we need to spend a little bit more time talking to you, figuring out, you know, what the value proposition is, and whether it's a good deal for the city. So I'm going to make that motion.
Okay, any other discussion before a motion is made?
25 on a dollar, I would take it.
Okay, well, that's something I'd look at.
There's no other discussion, then?
And so, okay, what's the motion?
I'll make a motion that we table this, bring it back, and we have to do this by May 15. So our, two meetings from now would be, yeah, and in two meetings, give us time to explore the value proposition and see if there's, if this is the best deal for the city.
Would you like to have a...
Should we have a second?
Would you like to take a friendly amendment?
Let me hear the friendly amendment, yeah.
There's no...
Oh, no second, yeah.
Well, give me the friendly amendment, then. I might, this might be my best.
Just a delay there for one meeting. We don't want to...
Okay, I will take that, yeah.
Okay, I second it.
All right.
I'll make an alternative motion to adopt Resolution Number 2518.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the substitute motion. Unless there's any discussion on the motion, let's go ahead and vote on the substitute motion. And the substitute motion, could you, Madam Clerk, do you have that clearly?
Yes, and I'm just adding it in to our system so that you can vote electronically. The substitute motion was motioned by Mayor Protim Enmire, second by Councilmember Lefler, to adopt Resolution 25-18, the staff recommendation. And you should be able to vote.
I'm frozen, but I'm an I.
You're an I. Let's see here. I will vote. Let's see, the vote, the vote just went away.
It failed.
Can we have a voice vote on that, in favor of the motion, or...
Yes, let's do a roll call.
I'm an I.
Aye.
So two yeses.
I'm a no.
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 Okay, on the original motion, do we have electronics queued up on that?
Two, three, let me try it again here. Let's see, the original was...
This is saving so much time.
Motion by Councilmember Cabral, second by Councilmember Wu. And let's start the voting again. And that was, that motion was to table this item, return to the March 4, 2025 city council meeting with additional information.
I'm an I.
You're an I.
It's frozen.
Let's see, record.
Okay, and that passes 5-0?
Just to be clear, I may support, I may support, I just need a little bit more information.
The location needs to be looked at, absolutely.
I think maybe if we could get a better deal, or see how we could frame this better, so it's of more value for citizens, I'd like to see if we could do that.
Okay, I think the next item, then, is Oral Communications, Part II. Do we have any speakers, cards?
We do. Let's see, Lisa H., followed by Warren Vedreen. Lisa H. still here? Lisa H., no. Okay, Warren Vedreen?
Okay, on the, on the ordinance, that was turned down a little earlier. I appreciate the discussion. I appreciate the outcome. I think that the, it would have been intrusive and not very effective. And I think we would also probably gotten into an expensive legal thicket, which, as a task bagger, I don't want. It was also suggested...
It was also suggested that we should take a look at the actual litter ordinances and see if we can improve that a bit. That sounds like a good direction to take. But thank you. Thank you. Next speaker.
Lois McNichol.
Yeah, hi, I'm Beck. So what's going on is that I came back from the inauguration, where I was very happy, and came back to the reports of a fire, and the fact that there's a lithium plant they want to develop right there in San Juan Capistrano. And I don't see a lot of that being talked about here in the City Council. And I also believe, and I, yeah, I know it's my opinion, but I'm free to express that. I also believe that our City Council should be getting together with the other beach, with the other beach communities, so that we don't have that happening anywhere on the beaches. Because the beaches are the jewels of California. They don't have, we don't, this doesn't exist anywhere else. So this is something we need to protect, and we're not doing that. And I noticed that when I was running this morning, because I saw the wonderful fences that they were fixing, and all the wonderful blocks, cement blocks that they had up there. And when I asked them, what is that for? Guess what they said? We don't know. We just work here. So they don't know what it's for. They tell me, oh, it might be for staging, or that they might be wanting to use it later, or it might, I don't want to hear that. I want to know what it's for. I asked you a question, you're working there, and if you don't, can't answer it, why can't you point me to somebody who will? So that's why I'm here, back, talking to the City Council, because I don't see any of these very important considerations being addressed.
Next speaker.
Tony, followed by Jeff.
I had an opportunity to go to an event for Tony Strickland this weekend, and it was phenomenal. And I really would just like to make sure that it's publicized as much as possible, that really just an excellent candidate for our state senate, for our district. And I think that that would be phenomenal. I think this council should probably get on board with starting to collectively endorse candidates that are safety-minded, that puts San Clemente at the top of looking for the best interests of the citizens. I think that that's something to consider moving forward, just like Huntington Beach. I think that this council also should consider that as proposals are moved forward, as we are anticipating regarding voter integrity, that that should be also something that should be considered by this council, to go ahead and endorse those topics as well. Moving on, there's been a number of concerns with free speech. We've gone through it ad nauseam. And I believe, now, if I wasn't here, and there are no notes that I was able to locate, but I believe the most recent thing at the council retreat was that Mark may have proposed shortening the speaker time allotted. And I think that's just another way to go ahead and silence free speech, which, you know, is consistent with Mark's background and his ideology. And recently, Watts over here had actually started a, I'm not sure, a podcast or something. And I'd just like to play a little snippet so that we could hear.
Ladies, a bunch of Karens. I mean, and they were like caricature Karens, like hairspray, like hair hairspray to the sky, bleach, bleach blonde, full face makeup, dripping and like the negative costume jewelry, like, we want to go get them. Let's do it. So.
Let's get the immigrants.
So I'm not sure if it's entertainment or, you know, informational. I'm not sure what the point of that podcast is. But I guess now that speakers are going to be a target, perhaps, that the speakers' appearances are going to be highlighted, I just think that's really unfortunate. I mean, nobody comes up here and says, you know, I'm reminded of that old 80s movie, The Valley Girl, when she's up here, but whatever, that's beside the point. Last thing, if you've noticed Mike Levin's social media, really quick, he is in full-blown panic. He is posting nonstop. His views and his attacks on the Trump administration, Doge, and their successes are definitely something that are not in alignment. And I think this council should consider not inviting him to any events. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Jeff. No last name provided.
How you guys doing?
Good evening.
I'm Jeff, the guy that has the Bible study. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm the guy that has the Bible study down there. I'm sorry for any kind of problems I've caused you guys, or anything like that. That was not my intention. I just wanted to read the Bible about 10 years ago, and people started showing up. And then homeless people started showing up, and they were hungry. So we gave them something to eat. We eat together with them. It's not like we're feeding them. I don't have a ministry of giving stuff out to homeless people. That's not what my intentions are, just to read the Bible. And I sit here, and I see that some of you guys are Christian, from what you say, and I see up here, it says, "In God we trust." I don't know who put that up there, but the last City Council meeting, it wasn't there. But it's in the right spot, above the city. We should always look to the Lord for what we do in our city. Because you could see a lot of cities in the Bible that were judged. I'm going to read you one scripture here, if I could find it. I don't know if I can find it. But it's about Sodom and Gomorrah. And it says, "The sins of Sodom were," and it wasn't homosexuality, it wasn't that. It's, "They didn't care. They had too much. They didn't take care of the poor, and they were haughty." So please, remember that, because you guys are all good men, and I want to thank you that I lived in the city for a very, very long time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers, Madam Clerk? Okay, the next item, then, is the future agenda items. And I just have one. Let me follow up on our closed session discussion this evening regarding the City Manager evaluation. As an adjunct to that discussion, I'd like to agendize a contract amendment for next week's discussion, closed session.
One second.
Mr. Mayor, you mean on the open session?
Well, we need to discuss it in closed session.
No, it must be discussed in open session.
Well, then we'll have it in open session, then. Is that acceptable? Okay.
Thank you.
All right, we have two council members to agendize that. Any other items, gentlemen? If not, we have any reports from commissions and committees? Madam City Attorney, do you have a report?
Nothing, except it's a pleasure to serve the City of San Clemente.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have one contract with Scott Vieiras and Associates for Building Plan Check Services in amount not to exceed $50,000 for the year 2025. Other than that, nothing.
Thank you. Anything else, gentlemen? Let entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will make a motion to adjourn the next city, the next regular City Council meeting.
Next regular City Council meeting is scheduled to take place on March 4th, 2025. Closed session will begin again at 4:30 PM, and the regular business meeting will begin at 5:30 PM. Meeting will take place in the council chambers, located at 910 Cai Negocio, second floor, San Clemente.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all in favor, just passage unanimously. We are adjourned.